I was asked to discuss the city's Ethics Code. In the Rules of Procedure for the City Council, and that Rules of Procedure includes all of your guidelines on motions and agendas and all those type of things, this City Code of Procedure is included in there. I went back and looked, and that, the Code of Procedure ordinance was adopted in 1958 by the City Council at that time, well, City Commission at that time. And pretty much the provisions that are in there now were the provisions that were adopted in 1958. In 2008, the City Council, when Dr. Flengey was serving as the City Manager, took a look at the City Council's all the Rules of Procedure, made some significant changes to a lot of the rules, but the rules concerning the Code of Ethics was not changed. The Council looked at it and decided that that was the Code of Ethics that they wanted to keep and not make any changes to. So I just wanted to let you know that this is a Code of Ethics that the Council has adopted and used over a period of time and has been what the Council relies upon as far as its City Code of Ethics. Now, I want to make sure you understand that you heard the presentation from Ann concerning the state law. The state law is the guiding force as far as ethics are concerned. It's necessary, absolutely necessary, that you comply with the state law on governmental ethics and what she described as what was needed. Now, the City Code does not have the definitions as the same as the state law does. It doesn't have a lot of the minute statements about what should be done and not done. The City Code itself is more of a general statement of ethics. And I want to turn to the first part. The Code is really kind of divided up into three different parts. And it covers the public trust issue from the start, then it goes into pecuniary interest issues, and then it talks about just common sense ethical situations over that, you know, come up and meet Council members as they're doing their duty as public officials. And one thing I'll state from the very front, I think that the first statement that out there kind of sets the tone for the whole Code of Ethics, is that you occupy positions of public trust. And that's where you're making decisions on behalf of the public welfare, the whole public entity and the people that you serve. It's not for individuals, but your decisions in your office is for helping preserve that public trust. And I think you'll see throughout this City Code that the public trust is a guiding light for these type of issues. And as I said, there's three different parts to this, and I think what you'll see from these, these are common sense rules, procedures of ethics. They are the core values of an ethical government. And I can tell you that I've Googled ethics provisions for other cities, and we're not the only ones that have these type of provisions. Most cities have those, and a lot of them are similar to the ones that we have. So I think it's important to know that we're in line with a lot of the cities in the country with these kind of, this kind of Ethics Code. Now, like I said, the second part of the, well, let me finish what I was going to say. The first part of the Ethics Code has to do with public funds. And basically, it's a statement of what is your obligations as far as, or what's going to happen as far as you're dealing with public funds. And that's going to be that it's subject to scrutiny, both as to legality and propriety. So that's a strong guideline statement of dealing with public funds. Then you get to the second part of the ordinance, and it has to do with what I call the shall avoids, don't do. These are non-pecuniary matters, but they are principles of good ethical government to follow as elected officials. And they're the non-monetary issues. Making use of special knowledge or information, sorry, making use of special information or knowledge prior to public release of the information. This is the fairness of keeping information that's confidential, confidential and not letting somebody else use the information for any other purposes or for your own purposes. Now, you get to the next one, making decisions involving business associates, customers, clients, friends, and competitors. It's a very broad statement. Decisions, what is that? Is that just saying, well, I'm going to help this person, or is this person needy, or is there something that needs to be done? Is this a major decision or minor decision? I think what you look at is, in this type of situation, that you're not violating any process or procedure, you're not violating some law to make a decision that favors someone, you're not doing something that would discriminate against one person or assist one other person. Now, I want to need to make you sure that you're aware of, there is another provision in the Rules of Procedure, that Council members are required to vote on matters that come before the Council. So if there are matters that come before the Council that may affect a business associate, customer, client, or competitor, what rules? The City Code or the state law? The state law would rule. We have issued decisions or opinions before when those kind of issues have come up where we say, okay, this may involve a business friend, it may involve a friend or somebody else that falls within this definition here. But if it doesn't violate the state Ethics Code, then you can go ahead and vote on that as that, the state Ethics Code would be the primary law that applies. It would not be the City Code provision. So I hope I've made that clear.
That's clear, I think, to most of us, Gary, but this is the one provision that's most confusing to the general public.
And that's, we've had that issue arise, I know what you're talking about.
A number of times.
Number of times. And it, again, it's a very broad statement. It's a very, there's no definitions of what a decision is. It doesn't go into any kind of long drawn-out definition of what are associates, customers, and clients, and friends, and competitors. So I think that, from the standpoint of doing the right thing, if it's in compliance with the state law, then I think that you're doing the right thing.
In a previous life, I did a lot of work on codes of ethics and even helped draft a model one in the state of Iowa. And this language is different than probably most codes that I'm familiar with. As Gary said, it's very broad, doesn't have any definitions, no guidance, and in fact, there's really very little guidance beyond the words of the Code of Ethics in terms of what you have in your entire code. If the Council wishes, if there are certain sections of this you want revisited so that we could take a look at model codes, and there are a number of those around the country, as well as what other cities are doing, understanding that the whole idea is to be above reproach and to maintain the public trust, but do so in a way that's meaningful, I'd be more than happy to start some work in that regard. Because I do think that without some additional guidance, it puts the Council and the staff and everyone else that tries to adhere to the Code in a difficult position because there is no guideline, and in this case, you have conflict between what's in your Code and state law, so.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, Bob, and we need to revisit parts of this because it does us no good if all we are doing on the surface for the average person to at least appear that we're in violation when we are totally following the intent of the law. And so why do we even want to put ourselves out there to make it look like we're in violation when we are self-imposing the most restrictions we can? And, you know, it just simply goes to the appearance, then we're really not accomplishing what we want to accomplish.
Right. Gary always warns me not to practice law, and I warn him not to practice city management, but there probably will be times under any code where the Council member will need to recuse themselves.
Oh, yes.
Right. And so, but it's a matter of how do you bring better definition to that.
Right.
And the one thing that I always wanted to make clear, when Council members would come to me with a question about whether they were in violation of this Code or whether there was an ethical issue facing them, then I wanted to make sure that first, they understood that the state law was controlling; second, I wanted to make sure they understood that the legal advice that I'm giving you, make sure that you have the jurisdiction to make that decision, you have a Code provision that says you have to vote on it. So then you have also, you're not doing anything that's contrary to any law. So your decision is proper, your decision is lawful, you just have this issue hanging over it of the City Code, is it a violation? And in our opinion, we say no. But I think that, you know, it's something that we've had on the books for a long time. It may be the time to take a look at it and see what other people do and how they handle that.
Right. And back to the point I made earlier, if you look at the normal process in which we do business, the majority of our contracts are competitively bid. So, I mean, there'd be very little opportunity for any kind of violation because of the competitive bid nature of the way we do business.
I've kicked the can and made it cream. Sorry, my foot got carried away there. Let me go to the-
Can I ask one more question, Gary?
Sure.
Okay, say I've identified somebody as a friend. Now, at that point, can I still participate in discussion and then recuse myself before the vote comes up? Or do I have to completely walk away from the bench and not even, or even walk away from the bench or the room completely?
My advice to you would be that if you do not have a substantial interest, the way Ann defined substantial interest under the state law, if you do not have a substantial interest and you're voting on the merits of the matter, then you can go ahead and vote on the matter without being in violation of the ordinance, because the ordinance requires you to also vote.
Okay, all right.
And it's been our, it's been our position, based upon this language, that the state Code prevails when there's a question about which one applies.
Because some of us have lots of friends. This is easy for me, but it-
Next one is repeated and continued violation of City Council rules. That would be when the mayor says, you know, you're out of line, you're out of order, those type of situations. So I think we've had good cooperation as far as that's concerned. Now, the next one is appointing immediate family members. I looked up the definition that we've used and how we've applied it, and it's anybody that's a relative, don't point them to a border commission. It's basically it. I mean, I could go through the whole list.
Fourth cousins, three times removed.
Well, that's gone a long ways. I don't have that on my list. But I do have, I do have parents, spouses, grandparents, brothers, sisters, mothers-in-law, fathers-in-law, adopted half-brother, half-sister, stepbrother, stepsister. So appointment of those family members to the board, they're immediate family members. Those are the ones that are being addressed here. Influencing employment of municipal employees. Well, first, the City Council, the only person that the City Council employs is the City Manager. Now, you appoint the judges, but your main employee is the manager. The manager is the employer of the rest of the employees of the city. So Council members should not be involved in making decisions on who's employed as a municipal employee. Plus, it would raise issues about our merit system and whether people were being appointed or handled or treated under our merit system. And so that's, I think that's pretty simple there. Fixing of traffic tickets, I'm sorry.
May I ask a quick question on this, about employment here? Is that limited to just decisions about hiring and firing of employees, influencing those decisions, or does that have anything to do with us, you know, telling staff what to do or not do? I mean-
No, I think it goes to-
Is that under a separate issue?
Yeah, I think there is a provision under the City Code that distinguishes the duties of the City Manager and the duties of the City Council. And one of those provisions is if the Council members have problems with or concerns about staff, then they're to take those to the City Manager and not go to the employees.
Okay.
It's the manager's responsibility to take care of those issues.
But again, if you take that bullet point literally, the City Manager asked us for our influence or opinion when he hired the Public Works Director, specifically ranking each one of those that we interviewed.
I think that is good business management on behalf of the City Manager.
I get that, but it goes against the literal sense of that bullet point.
I don't think as a, this applies to individual ethics. I don't think that individually, you're going to tell, you know, the manager's going to rely upon the Council to say, okay, I think that's a good choice, but that's his decision. He's just asking for your-
As long as he's asking, then we're not in violation of that.
Right. He's just asking for your reaction to that.
Direction.
Fixing traffic tickets, that's pretty simple. Those should be handled in a, you know, a proper method, and Council members shouldn't be asking for those to be taken care of either for themselves or for other people. Now, it doesn't mean you can't have the same defenses and same rights as anybody else. You don't lose your privileges, but it's just a matter of not asking for those. Seeking employment of immediate family members, again, same definition of immediate family members applies here. Now, using the influence as members of the governing body secure contracts, zoning or other municipal action for friends, immediate family members, et cetera, et cetera. Remember, when it says contracts, state law would prevail, and that is situation. So whatever the, whatever the state law says about handling a contract, what Ann just talked to you about, this Code provision would be in compliance with that because you'd have to comply with that state law. Zoning issues, you have to make zoning decisions based upon the merits, the facts that are before you in a quasi-judicial capacity. So that is covered in here. And then favorable municipal action, again, a very broad statement. And again, I think that what Mark talked about and what Ann talked about, there's a lot of concern or consideration of reasonableness when you deal with these type of matters. And I think that using, you know, good judgment and good sense, doing what is right, I think, is the guiding principle for you there. And also, if you don't follow the proper procedures, you could subject the decision to being challenged in court. Council members comply with all lawful action directories and orders of duly constituted municipal officials. I think what we're really just looking at here in the broadest sense, because other than that, there's not much else there, is that the mayor's giving direction as far as what's going on in the meeting, or if there's an emergency, a police chief or a fire chief, somebody's making directions and orders on what should happen, or we have some type of emergency going on, compliance with those type of things. I think that's the general nature of that one. Also, you know, complying with open meetings and open records and the state laws, I think, also would come underneath that. Now, Part Three, the last bullet here, is a very broad statement. It's encouraging good ethics, I think, and that just to conduct yourselves and bring credit upon the city and be an example of good ethical conduct. I think that's just a good statement of what your ethical conduct should be. And these last three or four items here, again, I think go to the issue of public trust. This is the Part Three of the three items that, of the Code. Again, the Code stressed it upfront, public trust. I think these finish up saying, you know, again, you're making your decisions on behalf of the public welfare, not for individuals. So you're going to refrain from benefiting special groups, ensure equal and impartial law enforcement, and without respect to race, creed, color, or economic or social position of individuals. Again, I think that's just good ethical common sense for any elected official. Any questions on the Code? The next section, on Guidelines for Use of City Resources. Over the years, I've been asked questions about these areas. There's not necessarily any ordinances or state laws that apply or definitely specific to this, but it's been the, what the expectation is and what would be a legal thing to do if the issue was challenged. So what we've come up with is just what we call Guidelines for Use of City Resources. First guideline is that you should not use the city's resources for non-city purposes. So except for reasonable personal use, which we'll get into, or a project that's of community-wide benefit, city resources should not be used for non-city purposes. Again, a very broad statement, I think, that everybody would agree with. Okay, what is a city resource? Basically, anything that belongs to the city is owned by the city, is part of the city's business practices, part of the city's work. Here, we're talking about the equipment. We're also talking about information about employees and city's email address. Those kind of things belong to the city and only should be used for city purposes. Okay, what is a reasonable, personable, personal use? I think the key here, as we've used before, is what the word reasonable means and how you do that. I think what you're looking at is if you're, if you're going to use a city resource for personal convenience, that you do it for a brief time, it doesn't interfere with productivity, doesn't create any additional cost, and is not for business, financial, or commercial purposes. Now, this is one view. Again, there's other people that have a different view of how far you could take this, as far as what a reasonable, personable use. Some entities allow you to go much further than this, some entities don't even allow you to use it for any personal use at all. So again, that's, this is the common sense, do you go to one extreme or you go to the other?
Gary, is this the particular point where, or is there another place that we're prohibited from doing political activity on city resources?
There's a state statute that applies to, it's a criminal statute, that says you can't use city equipment or personnel or money to influence a candidate's run for And I didn't put that up there because it's not an ethical issue, it's a criminal issue.
So the issue of using city computers for political fundraising for ourselves or any other candidates is prohibited by state law?
Right. And the Ethics Commission of the state has made a decision on that recently.
Thank you.
Okay, well, then what is a project that's with a community-wide benefit? Basically, looking at nonprofit or charitable organizations that provide that community-wide benefit, and they may, city funds and source of resources may be used to support these. The prime example is the River Festival. I think that is an appropriate use of city funds for this either nonprofit or charitable organization. All right, the last topic I want to cover has to do with endorsements. I've received calls and inquiries over the years. Somebody's asked a Council member to endorse a product, endorse a company, or endorse a cause, or something of that nature. And if it's not involved with the city, and if it's not a profit or a charity that's approved by the city, then you should not endorse those type of requests or be involved in there. We have had occasions where we're asked to give testimonial for a commercial product. Basically, don't do commercials for entities. That's the easiest way to put it. You know, I've had situations where people say, well, they want to say that this is a good deal for city and all citizens should do it. Well, you're still promoting one company over another. It's not the city policy to do one thing or the other, so just refrain from participating in a TV commercial, radio commercial, whatever, to endorse a product of a private entity. And finally, just emphasizing that not to use the city title to, you know, your title or the city to give a special advantage to any business, since that is a matter of policy, unless the Council approves it, you as an individual can't go against the city policy or announce that you represent the city's policy. All right, that's my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions.
I have a question. Is there anything in any of what we've heard this morning that addresses the issue of when there are contracts that we've put out for bid and we are in the time period of receiving those bids? Is there anything that we've heard this morning that addresses the issue about potential bidders contacting the City Council members and asking to meet with them?
We have, as far as I remember, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we have provisions in the RFPs that indicate to those people that they're not to contact the City Council. That's part of the process.
So the onus is on them. I mean, what do we do when they contact us? Because this happens frequently, and I've, I-
I think from the standpoint of, you know, addressing that person-
Should we decline the person?
Yes, I think you should decline the person and tell them that, you know, we understand the RFP process is that the Council members are not to be contacted, therefore, we would decline to meet with you about the matter.
Report on revisions to the RFP process and the committee, the review committee or selection committee process? And we can talk more about that at that time.
I think it's important too, because I'm not sure that's clearly understood by us as a Council.
But at the same time, should we deny somebody access to their elected officials? At the same time, I think there's just a fine line there. You know, we're elected to represent and listen to everybody, so, you know.
What we're trying to do is bring balance, a little more balance to the process. What we'll probably bring forward will still be a recommendation for no contact during the selection process, but then opening up the results of the committee's recommendation before it goes to Council so that someone does have the ability to submit a meaningful protest before the Council takes action. Right now, basically, they've been, you're backed into a corner, as well as the vendor, that we don't go public until we go public with our report on a Friday, and so we-
That's caused some issues.
It has, and for you as well. I mean, when someone asks for an appeal. So it's, we're trying to maintain the integrity through the selection process, but still allow them access to the Council before you have to make a final decision.
Right.
Again, we're, that'll, that's not policy today, that's what we're bringing it forward for your review.
Something that's very important to the process as you're going through it, and plus, if there's any challenges to the process, is that you protected the integrity of the process. If you can say, our process has been appropriate, we followed- If you can say, our process has been appropriate, we followed all the rules, then you're in much better shape than if you don't. Thank you. I know it's been a long afternoon for you, but I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Gary. Be in no further comments. That concludes the workshop.